Good evening. My name is Shannon Barnes. I serve as the Chair of the Merrimack School Board. And I'd like to begin by introducing those people present for tonight's meeting, starting with our board members. To my far right is Mike Thompson. Next to him is Cyndi Gualy-Yumi. Vice Chair to my right is Andy Schneider. Unable to make it tonight is Board Member Naomi Schoenfeld and Student Representative Christopher Puzzo. To my left is District Attorney Kathy Peel from the Wadley Law Group. To her left is Superintendent of Schools Marge Chaffrey. And to her left is the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Dr. Mark McLaughlin. Taking notes for us is our scribe, Rose DiNucci. And I will just give a little introduction to tonight's meeting. New Hampshire law prohibits or permits local schools to hear appeals of citizens in certain circumstances, including certain circumstances where a parent disagrees with the decision by the district administration. And in some cases, the law requires a school board to grant parents a hearing. For example, local school boards are tasked with hearing requests for a change of assignment based on manifest educational hardship or hearing an appeal of a student's suspension or expulsion. The Board has convened a special meeting in response to a request from Mr. Bevel for a hearing regarding his complaints related to the district's homework policy. Mr. Bevel requested that the meeting be open to the public, and therefore it has been posted as a public meeting. Mr. Bevel, although you have not identified any administrative decision from which you are appealing, tonight's meeting will be held in accord with state regulation ED 204-01, which sets forth due process procedures required to resolve disputes between individuals in the school system. However, I want to make clear that the fact that we are following the procedures of Rule ED 204-01 does not mean that the Board is forming an opinion that you have a right to a hearing, or that there's a right of appeal to the New Hampshire Department of Education from this hearing. There will be a recording made of this meeting, and the recording will be made available to you upon your request. In addition, our clerk will be taking minutes of this meeting. The procedure is as follows. The formal rules of evidence shall not apply. You will begin by providing the Board with a description of your request, the evidence in support of your request, and any argument in support of your position. You will be permitted to call witnesses in support of your presentation. The Board will be permitted to ask questions after your presentation. You will be permitted to make a brief closing statement. And correction, Student Rep. Puzzo is in attendance. Thank you, Chris, for being able to make it. After your presentation, you will be excused and the Board will go -- I'm sorry. Following your presentation, the Board will deliberate. Deliberation will take place in public session, and the Board may recess during this session to consult with its legal counsel. The Board will then entertain a motion or motions on this matter. To the extent it deems appropriate, any motion will be followed by a written decision or decisions on this matter. And the meeting is now in session, and I will turn the microphone over to you, Mr. Bevel.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. Is it possible I could get a copy of the statement that you just read?
I can have it made available to you.
Okay. All right, because I disagree with some of that, and I will enter in as the exhibits how I put my argument together for this. So again, thank you for all coming tonight. I appreciate your being here and hearing my request. Again, this is like probably the third time I've been here, but according to the law, the last time I asked for this meeting, I mean that I attended, I did not know that I needed to ask it in the formal manner as an education 204. So I've created a binder of exhibits here. It's not as frightening as it looks, because I will only be referencing certain sentences within documents that already exist in the public sector, you know, school board meeting minutes and things that have been passed out to parents. So if I could ask you to pull the front page out, that's your exhibit. You slide that out of the front. And then also, if you would slide out of the front page, inside is one that says "The Timeline of Events." So that will help us to reference items and for us to go quickly through this and not keep anybody here longer than we have to. So I see that each of you also received a copy of the letter I sent along with Superintendent Marge Chaffrey's response to that. But I just want to, again, point out, it is my contention that the Merrimack -- I'm reading from the letter Exhibit A. "It is my contention that the Merrimack School Board has violated New Hampshire Administrative Rules Education 306.14A1 by not providing a written policy on homework, including its relationship to the grading system for which each school that has an instructional program, which has been voted upon and ratified by a quorum of the Board, having been provided notice by me at a regular meeting of the Merrimack School Board on 11/20/2017. In addition, New Hampshire Administrative Rules Education 302-02 are by not holding this Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum accountable to the implementation and review of school district policies, but rather the School Board abdicated its responsibilities under Education 306.14A1 to the administration. The regulations make it clear that the Board adopts educational policies, and the superintendent is responsible for implementing those responses." If you'll turn to Exhibit B, you'll see the letter from Superintendent Marge Chaffrey. I call your attention to the fourth paragraph where it's saying, "Please be aware that the district's protocol for public hearings will apply to this meeting. Accordingly, you may offer your objective criticism and disagreement with the subject matter of your dispute. However, the Board will not hear personal complaints about school personnel or complaints against particular district employees in a public setting. There are other channels available for you to this." Nothing I'm saying tonight is a personal attack on anyone. It is in a professional capacity, and it is in the course of the responsibilities outlined in the state regulations. So if you'll turn on to Exhibit C. What I learned is, and Marge already knows this and several of the others, there are different levels of appeal in the process for New Hampshire. If you have a child with a state with an IEP, that's an appeals process. If you have a child who has been a subject of bullying or bringing knives or guns or something like this, that's a second hearing. This one coming before the School Board while on the books has not been used much, and Attorney Peel can back me up. I did a lot of looking up on this. Most of the time, Education 204-01 has been used, it has been inappropriately used by disgruntled employees or superintendents based on wrongful termination. So that's most of the legal references here. So we're on pretty new ground here, so forgive me if I'm not doing too well on this. So I contacted the State Department of Education to learn what was the proper procedure for resolving a dispute between individuals and the School Board. I received this letter from Stephen Berwick, who is the coordinator of the Dispute Resolution and Constituency Complaints Department. And he referred back to me, it says here, "Currently, the opportunity for Mr. Bevel would be through the Education 204's appeals process. In that process, the parent can file an appeal as a contested case with the local School Board regarding the homework issue. Upon receipt of a final written decision from the School Board, he can then appeal to the State Board if he is dissatisfied with their response." The next sentence is very important. It says, "The focus in such a case is the effect of the policy, or lack thereof, on the student." And so that's where we're heading with that. Okay? Heading on to Exhibit D. This is the codification of the laws that we're going to be referencing tonight. Chairman Barnes already has mentioned these, so I'm going to go to the two specific ones that I am referencing. The first one being New Hampshire Code Administrative Rules Education 204-01. "A local School Board shall adhere to the following due process procedures prior to a party filing a dispute as a contested case with the Office of Legislation." If you go on back to the next page, which is Page E, it says, "The decision of the local Board shall at a minimum include the following: the date of the decision, a description of the issue in dispute, the Board's decision, and the rationale for the Board's decision." Paragraph F says, "The written decision shall be considered a final decision at the local level." So basically, as you had already lined out, I'm going to present my evidence in what is the 204-01, which is referred to as a dispute between individuals and the School Board. The next page is a different code. This is the one I'm calling into question. New Hampshire Code Administrative Rule 306.141. There is another one that came before this that's just .14. And if you notice in the title, it says "Instructional Standards July 1, 2015." The difference between the old book rule and the new one is the codification of competency. Competency was added to this. So that's the only difference between the two on the books. So I'm referring to where it says here, "The local School Board shall require, no later than it gives the date, that each school has an instructional program which includes the following: a policy on homework, including its relationship to the grading system." All right, if we go onto the next law, which is two pages away, that is Education 302-02. That is substantive duties of the superintendent's office. The first paragraph saying, "The superintendent shall, in addition to those outlined in Education 302-01," if you'll turn the page, "paragraph R," it says, "be responsible for the implementation and review of school district policies." All right. If you'll turn to Exhibit E. This is a copy of the New Hampshire School Board Association Training Document for School Board Personnel, I mean for School Board Elected Officials, and it talks about their roles and responsibilities. On Page 2, it says, "In addition to the duties of the School Board listed in New Hampshire Rule 303, the DOE also has rules that speak to the School Board's responsibilities with respect to the minimum standards for public school approval." Next paragraph, Ed. 306, begins by stating that "in order to be an approved school, public schools and public academies shall meet the applicable criteria established in those standards," skipping down. "They relate to various subjects such as absenteeism, promoting school, safety, and homework." And it goes on from there. If you'll turn to Page 9 in the same section. Talks about Section 4, the superintendent's duties. Paragraph 1, the implement School Board Policy, references Rule Education 302-02R. It says, "Be responsible for the implementation and review of school district policies." Last paragraph, "As these rules listed above indicate, and in conjunction with the rules relative to School Board's duties and responsibilities covered in earlier pages, the School Board affects, adopts policy, and the superintendent implements Board policy." All right, so let's go on to Exhibit F. This is a document that has been created by Attorney Peel's office in 2014 by Attorney Allison Menutelli. It is an advisory piece available to anyone on the Internet and was put together for members of the New Hampshire School Board Association. In this document, it has several references to the responsibilities of elected officials. Page 3 at the top talks about the state authority over the local School Board. At the beginning, at the paragraph 2, it says, "Practice pointer. The local School Board is subject to the regulatory authority of the state and the State Department of Education." Okay, on Page 15, it talks about the oath of office and Board Member authority. School Board Members are bound to follow and uphold the law as part of the oath of office taken by a School Board Member. New Hampshire Revised Statutes Annotated 922 requires public officers, holders who are required to take an oath to make or subscribe the oath or declaration as prescribed by Part 2, Article 84 of the Constitution. Further down, it says, "Thus, the oath of office requires Board Members to adhere to and uphold the district policies and New Hampshire law governing the conduct of School Boards, including any business conducted in a non-public session," which is not relevant here. The district policies include a code of ethics. Bullet item, bottom of 15. Remember that my -- okay, it says, "The code of ethics indicates that each Board Member will strive to improve public education and will. Remember that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools," and then skip one. "Recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after fully discussion at public-held Board meetings," and we skip the next two. "Work with other Board Members to establish effective Board Policies and delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent of schools." This refers to policy BCA-R. This is not one that I believe Merrimack has adopted, but it is recommended by the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Page 17 talks about the right to know law, and I believe that is all for that section. Okay. Excuse me. On the issue of standing, right now, because this is a public forum and it is falling under 204, if this needs to go beyond the administrative process, and I have not gotten the administrative relief that I'm due, the next step would be for me to file a writ of certiorari with the Superior Court in Northern District of Hillsborough County. And one of the things that's important is whether or not I have standing to make that argument. Recent decision with, called Neal Kirk versus Thomas Clow, states how the court feels about those kind of issues. It basically says, "I can't complain that I don't like what the school district's doing, and if it doesn't, if it does not harm me, then I have no standing to bring a legal action. I may go as far as I want to through the administrative process, but this is where my argument stops if I don't have standing." So in the Neal Kirk decision on Page 2, it says at the bottom of the analysis, "Rather, standing under the New Hampshire Constitution requires party to have personal, legal, or equitable rights that are adverse to one another with regard to an actual, not hypothetical dispute, which is capable of judicial redress." Bottom of the next page, "In each of those cases, the court properly found no standing because none of the plaintiffs could demonstrate a specific, concrete injury caused by the defendants," next top of page, "actions. Here, on the other hand, plaintiff has established that he will personally face an increased tax burden as a direct result of the increased default budget." Bottom of the page, next to the last paragraph, "While plaintiff's injury here is shared by other taxpayers, and where it is a specific, concrete injury that is sufficient to provide him standing to bring the present complaint." I bring forward my complaint that I have a 17-year-old daughter who has been directly harmed by this incident. In one of her classes, her cumulative grade was a 64. She missed passing the class by one point. If there had been any factoring of her homework with that, she would have gotten a bump of more than a point, but at least a point to pass it. She now has to go to summer school to make up that English class. So this is my standing for a minor child who has been harmed. All right, going on to, I can't even read what that tab is. H, this is policy adoption. Excuse me. Merrimack has not adopted a policy adoption paper that I know of. It's not at least available on it. So I was able to get one that is a standard one from the New Hampshire School Board Association from New Boston School District. So it talks here about what is the process for ratifying any kind of changes to a policy. And I won't go into this, but I enter this as evidence for you for your own discussion because you are not held to this, but it is what is recommended from the New Hampshire School Board Association that Chairman Shannon Barnes is also president of that organization. Okay, so we turn the page on that one, and then we'll look at what is the current homework policy for Merrimack. And I'm just going to read the first two sentences. "Homework is a constructive tool in the teaching-learning process when geared to the needs and abilities of students. Purposeful assignments not only enhance student achievement, but also develop self-discipline and associated good working habits." Let's turn the page. Barnstead School District. "Homework is a construction tool in the teaching-learning process when geared to the students' needs and abilities of a student. Purposeful assignments not only enhance students," do you see a pattern here? Next page, East Keekston, same statement. Next page, Exeter, same thing. Next page, Portsmouth. I only found out of about 30 schools that Bedford and Wyndham wrote their own. So all of the school districts basically have this puppies-and-kittens kind of homework policy that does not address changing the grading system or addressing the changing of the grading system. However, none of those school systems are proposing or have implemented the changing of the homework grade to count for zero towards the cumulative GPA. Okay, Tab I is a timeline of homework policy events. I gave you that as a handout here so you can follow along with me, and I'm going to kind of read through that. So again, I will be referencing some of the next tabs. You can look at them. Again, that's why I'm saying we're going to be able to fly through some of this, is because it's just referencing the conversation that got us here. So from the notes of the approved School Board meeting for October 3, 2006, "School Board Member Thompson asks if the K-12 Science Curriculum Development Committee is looking into the impact of homework. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin replies that there is an ongoing conversation within the district on the topic of homework." That is Tab J. Okay, Tab K is from January 1, School Board Meeting, approved minutes. "School Board Member Thompson," again, "had a parent reach out to him regarding the homework burden," I believe it was for an elementary student, "and he asked that it would like to have it investigate the issue." Note that Board Member Thompson only directed the administration to investigate the burden of homework. He didn't say change it or anything. He just asked to investigate it. Tab L is School Board Meeting, January 17. "Dr. McLaughlin presents information to the School Board that the Report Card Committee's goal is to develop a pre-K to 6th grade standards-based report card. When completed, it will set the stage for a 7th to 12th grade standards-based report card." This is the only mention in that meeting. Tab M, May 15. "Dr. McLaughlin offers an update on the Homework Committee progress. This is the first public mentioning of the Homework Summit or the Homework Committee as a separate committee. So far, all I've seen is the Science Curriculum Development Committee and the Report Card Committee, and now we have a Homework Committee. So I'm confused, and I'm sure anyone else who looked up the record would be too, as to what committee is what." "Dr. McLaughlin says, 'When the work is done, Dr. McLaughlin reports that the results will be presented formally to the School Board. School Board Member Schneider asks that parents be included in the discussion.'" Well, that didn't happen. All right. Tab N. First day of school in the morning. This is an excerpt from the Parent-Student Handbook. I didn't want to burden you with a ton of pages, so I just copied the front page and then the banner page that names all the School Board Members, and then I went to Page 9 of the homework. I'd like to read that paragraph. We've seen it several times, but I want to point it out once again. "Homework is intended to support student learning by providing opportunities for practice based on the differentiated needs of students. Homework should be designed by the educator to support learning, and its completion is the responsibility of the student. Under the assumption that practice supports deeper learning, the consequence of noncompliance or insufficient care with homework assignments rests with the student and will not be factored into the final academic grades, but will likely result in diminished understanding and performance, and by extension, a reduced academic grade." This is also mentioned later on in Dr. McLaughlin's letter, and I want to draw your attention while we're here to the next paragraph. "If anybody has any doubt as to whether Dr. McLaughlin intended us to keep doing homework, it says so right here. Students may average 60 to one, that's one to three hours a night of homework. They can expect an average of 60 to 180 minutes of homework per night total from all teachers." All right. Tab O is the minutes from the meeting. So the, I want to call your attention to that a new policy, whether you call it policy, protocol, or whatever you want to bake a cake, has been presented to the parents and teachers as a change to whether their cumulative grade is going to count. So in the minutes of September 5, Tab O, "Dr. McLaughlin addresses the School Board, 'During new business section, the new homework policy changed.'" Now, isn't this a little late to be introducing as new business when the Assistant Superintendent has already codified the change without a vote of the School Board? Also, the term homework protocol does not appear, and it was contrived after the printing of this, and the handbook does not distinguish between what is a homework policy or a protocol. "School Board Member Dr. Schoenfeld requested that the matter be scheduled as an agenda item at a future date." This is the first day of school. "Chairman Barnes suggests delaying further review until after midterms and teacher feedback five months later." Okay, Tab P. Two days later, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McLaughlin distributes a letter to all parents, attempting to explain the new homework policy. "The gist of Dr. McLaughlin's letter can be summarized by the statement I already read from the handbook." And I changed one of the wordings just to make it make more sense. "The consequence of noncompliance or insufficient care in turning in homework assignments rests with the students and will not be included in the cumulative GPA score. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin, a new homework paragraph in the guide is a radical paradigm shift in the scoring of cumulative grading system and was neither ratified nor rejected by a School Board quorum." Also, I already made reference to this, the 60 to 80 minutes of homework. So if there was any doubt, homework still stands. Next Tab Q. This is from School Board Meeting, September 18. "Dr. McLaughlin provides, as his formal presentation, he referenced at the May 17, a seven-slide presentation stating the issue of homework. Again, discussion ensues, and again, Chairman Barnes suggests delaying any action and would like to see feedback after midterms as to the impact of the homework policy." We have now seen this at least twice, almost three times, and there has been no vote as to the policy. Next Tab R. This is the slide presentation provided by Dr. McLaughlin at that meeting. "Dr. McLaughlin's presentation concentrates on three points: academic integrity, equity, and personal responsibility. I came to a later meeting and pointed out that I had to have my college-age daughter tell me what that meant. Academic integrity is code word for cheating between students. Equity is code for, code words for parents who help with their children's homework, or maybe do it, versus those parents who do not. And the third item is personal responsibility, which shifts the burden of learning and homework preparation from the parents and teachers to the self-motivation of an immature adolescent child. So in his presentation, not only does the Assistant Superintendent make a bald assertion that students are cheating on their homework and that some parents are doing their homework for them, he also unilaterally decides that the responsibility for completing homework should be placed squarely on the shoulders of all high school students, and that an intervention by parents diminishes the learning experience." Tab S. Here is a copy of the FOIA Right to Know. I invoked both to meet with Dr. McLaughlin to, since the letter that he sent out to all the parents referred to a homework summit. I wanted to see what was there. That should have been a public meeting. I should have been able to see what those documents were, so I had asked for that at this time. So at that time, I did two things. One, I asked for a Right to Know to see what was discussed there. Tab T. "I also called for a public meeting in the Town Hall for parents to come in to discuss this. The only available date provided by the Town Manager's Office was Friday, October 13, As you can see, I have what are called tear sheets. This is used in the legal vernacular to show that something is come forward in the public notice. So this is a paid advertisement in the newspaper of record. If you can see there, fortunately, it doesn't have all my credit card information on there. And it has the two pages where the notice appeared in the town paper on two consecutive Fridays, September 29 and October 6. Tab U is the results of the meeting with Dr. McLaughlin. These are the items he gave me. They have been numbered, and because it was a large amount of information, thank you, I did it sideways so that we could get to, you know, again, I'm not going to reference these. these more than the last couple of pages for the material, but Dr. McLaughlin assured me that this is the materials that the Homework Committee was able to look at. In fact, a couple of things Dr. McLaughlin and I talked about, we both had reference, citations of materials. So, the, I believe it is the third to the last page, it has, it has a special numbering on it, 47 and 48, shows the Elementary Report Card Committee, and I didn't know that that was the Homework Summit Committee, but that's who he gave to me as part of that. And then the second one is some of the discussions, the pro and con, and then he had a very good matrix spreadsheet that ended up printing across two pages. So, there was some discussion on that. Okay, Tab V is the presentation that I made on October 13.
Bob, could you please reference where you are in the book? I think people are...
Okay. I was referencing Tab U, third to the last page, and that was on page number 47 and 48. Okay? All right. Yes, ma'am. All right. Tab V, this was the presentation I made in front of about 20 people on October 3 in the Town Hall. In that presentation, I provided a 30-minute presentation on the homework protocol discussion to date. I included possible grading alternatives that still included homework as part of the cumulative grade system and that the School Board was not in compliance with Rule 30614. I also gave you a copy of this package at a later date. I presented ideas that I liked, I presented ideas that I didn't like so that we could have at least a parental discussion on the matter because as one of the board members had recommended, we should have had the parents involved in this process. Tab W is Merrimack School Board Minutes for 11/20. On this meeting, the School Board had a specific agenda item for the parental feedback on homework. Several members of the public rose to speak for and against the homework policy. And there are those notes of some of those people who spoke. I highlighted several of those for your consideration. On Tab X is the presentation or the discussion that I made where that I talked about where I had been very happy with the school district. If you remember, I have two college-age or now past-college-age daughters that are doing extremely well and are benefiting from the education that they got here, and their homework counted and counted towards their GPA. They both got merit scholarships, they got good funding, they were able to get into high, top-tier schools because of their grades, and I feel like my other children are not going to be able to do that because they're going to be cheated out of their homework. I brought that to your attention in these notes. Tab Y is the Board Meeting Later. Oh, excuse me, I left out on that meeting. At the November 20 meeting, Chairman Barnes again notes that the matter will be investigated and reported back after midterms and teacher feedback. So, still no vote, still putting it off. We're still not going to address this until almost the very end of February. So, here we are now, Tab Y, the meeting of February 19. "Dr. McLaughlin discusses the results of the Parents and Teachers Survey regarding the new homework policy. Note that the Board, still at the conclusion of this meeting, has still taken no action at the conclusion. Robert Bevel asks during the public comments section at the School Board Meeting if the School Board has researched the rules on 30614. Chairman Barnes says that the public comments section is only for comments and not for question and answer. Robert Bevel comments that he has not received feedback on the matter from the School Board. I also comment that the teachers' survey was a closed form rather than an open form, and the results overwhelmingly demonstrated that the teachers wanted homework to count." Finally, I comment that Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin dismissed the results of the teachers' results as a failure on his part to properly communicate his intent of the new homework policy. I think it was quite clear, and they were not happy with it.
Mr. Bevel?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as Dr. McLaughlin's performance, I think that, you know, we have not put that...
Adam, can I finish my statement? I'm not attacking him personally. I'm talking professionally. Can I finish my statement? I'm almost done. Thank you. After the, okay, Tab Z. "After the School Board Meeting on 2/19 but before 2/26," I didn't know the date, "the school district posts the school district website, the results of the parent-teacher survey. In addition, the School Board posts on the school district empirical study cite, reference citations supposedly utilized during the homework summit deliberations. This information was not provided to me during my FOIA Right to Know request. If you'll look at the first page of this, it talks about that much of the information here is not available to the public unless they have a subscription, which I have paid for, or they have to go to the public library." So, these have summations of results of what they were doing. So, that is my exhibit to be presented at this time. I have a conclusion. "The School Board never voted to delegate its authority to the administration for a radical change in the grading system. The School Board never adopted or rejected the administration's proposed homework policy change. However, under the fiduciary duties as Chairman of the Merrimack School Board, under her fiduciary duties as President of the New Hampshire School Board Association, Mrs. Barnes knew or should have known the proper procedure for adopting a major policy change to the homework policy and its impact on the cumulative grading system to the School Board, to the school district. IKB homework policies across the multiple school districts read almost the same. However, none of their implementations involve the elimination of homework in the cumulative grading system. Such a radical change in the grading system should be discussed and voted upon by the School Board as it has input, as it has put Merrimack students at a significant competitive disadvantage to an equal opportunity, educational opportunity afforded to other New Hampshire high school students such as scholarship, college acceptance, and future job placement." I submit into evidence my official complaint. Could you please pass that around? "Having been notified by parent of the School Board's responsibility under New Hampshire Administrative Rule 30614A1 to provide a written policy on homework, including its relationship to the grading system for each school that has an instructional program, and by the School Board failing to adopt a new homework policy by a public reading of the new policy and ratification by a majority of the quorum present, and by failing to hold accountable the Superintendent's Office for their implementation and review of the new homework policy per Rule 30202R, and by allowing the unauthorized actions by the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum to alter the weighted value of homework in its relationship to the cumulative reported grading system without a vote by a majority of the School Board present at a regularly scheduled meeting, and by the intentional or unintentional collusion by the Chairman of the School Board with the Assistant Superintendent to delay any action on this matter until after midterms and feedback from teachers, and by the intentional inaction by the School Board to act on the matter after the midterms and feedback and from both parents and teachers. Therefore, quoting from the letter from Stephen Burwick, 'By the effect of the policy or lack thereof,' which gives this jurisdiction under 20401, 'the School Board and the Superintendent's Office has caused a specific and concrete injury to student CB, daughter of parent, and to her fellow Merrimack School District students, high school students, by denying them an equal educational opportunity afforded to other high school students within the New Hampshire public school system such as future merit scholarships, acceptance and admission by the top-tier college of their choice, and future job prospects.'" Thank you.
Is the board have any questions for Mr. Bevel? Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Bevel, for the presentation. My question would be in regards to the injury that you're claiming of the 64% grade. I would like to understand what actions you or your daughter took prior to actually receiving that grade to talk to the teachers and actually see if there was other options to increase that grade or actually show competency within it.
Okay. I will be glad to discuss that with you as a personal matter outside the record of this. It's not relevant towards this section.
I tend to disagree, but I will take that, that's, there's no...
You're asking for me to make an exception for my daughter and go and appeal to a teacher. Whether I did that or not is not relevant to the way that the policy has been changed. The grading for homework is now zero towards the cumulative, and she has been damaged. You're now asking me, did I take other steps to go and beg the teacher for some extra credit or something else?
I'm not saying beg, so I will...
And I will be glad to address that.
I will stop my question after that comment. Thank you.
Cinda?
I mean, I would just say I would prefer to not have that, at least that personal information of Mr. Bevel's daughter that we discuss anyway, so I would say that would be probably an off-camera.
That's why I put the CB stuff, yeah.
Well, I'm just doing it based off of the comments that were actually made during the presentation, so I was responding to the comments that were brought forward as public information prior.
Are there any other questions from the Board? I just had a point of clarification, and that is when you were presenting Section P, which is the letter to Parents and Guardians from Dr. McLaughlin, you said that he put forth the changes in the policy, and I'm just going to read, because you didn't, I'm going to read Item 1 under the initial opening paragraph. "The district homework policy provided below is unchanged. I've highlighted in yellow those areas of the policy that should serve as the basis for your understanding of its role in the totality of the educational environment." So, I'm just leaving that out there. I think that's been our, we do have a homework policy. This is a way of instituting that policy, which is different, but that's not saying that the policy has changed in its core definition. So, that's, I just wanted to make that clear, that those were words that were infused that are not accurate. So, we never did institute a change of policy in that letter, so, or communicate it to parents. So, for that, I just wanted to make that point of clarification. Are there any other questions of Mr. Bevel?
I'd like to follow up to your comment.
Okay.
I do not deny that you have not changed your homework policy in the books, and you're calling his a protocol. That is a contrived statement to get around the fact. When you bake a cake, you can't make a recipe and exclude the yeast. You cannot have a formula for something and just choose to it. So, your job is to make the policy, which is the recipe. Now, you've had the Assistant Superintendent decide to leave one of the pieces out. You don't have cake anymore.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Bevel? At this time, we'd like to recess and consult with legal counsel. ...by section, and we will deliberate as a Board as to the position on the complaint that you presented. So, the first section was after having been notified by parent of the School Board's responsibility under NH Admin Rules 306.14A1 to provide a written policy on homework, including its relationship to the grading system for each school that has an instructional program. So, on that note, we do. So, I don't know if anyone else has any weigh-in on that. Michael?
I believe after reviewing the policy that is in hand, it actually does state that we have a policy in regards to each school because it is blanket for the district, and also additionally, it does clearly state that the teachers are to explain the association of homework within regards to their grade.
Okay. Is there any other feedback on Section 1 of the complaint? On to the next section. "By the School Board failing to adopt a new homework policy by a public reading of a new policy and ratification by a majority of the quorum present." On that note, Cinda? No, no, please.
Sorry, I was just going to say, based on what Board Member Thompson just said, that we do not, have not adopted a new homework policy, that the policy that we have had in place for many years still is inactive policy.
On to 3, which is "By failing to hold accountable the Superintendent's Office for the implementation and review of a new homework policy per NH Admin Rules ED302.02, Section R." And to that note, we don't have a new homework policy, so therefore, we can't hold accountable the Superintendent's Office for implementation and review of a new homework policy because we haven't changed it. So, to that, to that end, we have held up what was expected of us as a Board. Are there any other comments or feedbacks on this section? On to the next section. "By allowing the unauthorized actions by the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum to alter the weighted value of homework in its relation to the cumulative reported grading system without a vote by a majority of the School Board present at a regularly scheduled meeting." Is there any feedback on that? Andy?
Yeah, I'll take this. So, I think, I think what's clear is that, excuse me, is that there actually never was a formal written weighted value of homework in terms to its relation. If you go back and look, there's, even in other parental guides, it was never formally stated of a consistent weighted method across. So, the, the change that the, excuse me, the implementation did, did not alter anything that was previously written down in effect in terms of formal weighted, weighted in relationship.
And, oh, yeah, please do, Michael.
And, and I also would like to just add that there was, with that, there was no set weighted value of homework across the district, so there could actually have been inconsistencies with that weighted homework across the, across the actual district.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments on this section? On to the next section. "By the intentional or unintentional collusion by the Chairman of the School Board with the Assistant Superintendent to delay any action on the matter until after midterms and feedback from teachers." Again, if we're going back to the policy, we've made no change in the policy. So, basically, when it comes to it, we're consistent with our policy. When it comes to implementation of homework protocols, which are not the same, they are distinctly different, and we've shown that in multiple School Board meetings and testimonies. And to that end, the request was made and vetted thoroughly at prior Board meetings that we would actually look to have data points on how this protocol is actually impacting the classroom environment and how it's going to impact student performance. So, without data, you're making decisions in the dark, and I think we've talked about that at a number of Board meetings. So, with that, there was no intentional or unintentional collusion because there was no collusion at all, which is a very heavily loaded word, and I think that it's, you know, definitely not what this Board is doing. So, I will say, are there any other comments to that? Michael?
I'd just like to also say that this conversation has come up multiple times throughout the school year. I think that that shows that we are actually taking action in regards to this protocol in trying to obviously learn from it and expand on it and make it so that it continues on its, to success.
Chris?
I have a question. What is the difference between a policy and a protocol? Because I'm not sure if we ever actually discussed that.
Well, a policy is a regulation, so it's kind of like the law. A protocol is an implementation of a practice. So, every classroom, you know, looking at the rules and the laws of the district, every, if you go into every classroom, you have a different experience. The protocol is how you implement the expectations of the laws and how you can practice it within the rules. So, that's absolutely, they're very two different things.
So, policy is law, protocol is how you carry it out?
Yes, and you can be, you can do legal things, and so, if you're driving a car and it's a 30 mile an hour zone, and I'm going 28 and you're going 25, we're both carrying out the law using different protocols. So, and you better be under 30, especially if it's snowing outside. So, so, on that note, so that's, that's how we have, have conducted ourselves to date. On to the next section. "By the intentional inaction by the Board to act on the matter after midterms and the feedback from both parents and teachers." Andy?
So, this, this is probably the one I have the most difficult with because at the last meeting that was cited in the end of February, I think... the last meeting that was cited in the end of February, I think that the results that we got from surveys and other feedback from students as well as others, and the discussion that we had shows that the board wants to look at what's there and really look at the implementation to see how we should move forward with it. I think that the assumption that we're just turning a blind eye to what we're hearing is, is very inaccurate, and that, that our inaction, we, it's not inaction, it is gathering enough data to take the proper action and not do it in a way that doesn't have the adequate information that we need, so.
Okay. Give your hand up. Okay. And on to the last section. "Therefore, by the effect of the policy or lack thereof, the school board and superintendent's office has caused specific and concrete injury to student CB, daughter of parent, and to fellow Merrimack high school students by denying them equal educational opportunity afforded to other high school students within New Hampshire public school system, such as future merit scholarships, acceptance and admission by the top-tier college of their choice, and future job prospects." Does anyone want to speak to that point? To that end, we don't have a quantifiable, specific, and concrete injury at this time. That's, you know, for, for future merit scholarships, acceptance, and admissions, we've received no data that an impact has been had. What we do know is, based on the live testimony of our district, that what we are looking to put out are students who are prepared to be more successful at their destination at college. When we look at the college experience, it's how they master the material, and I think that that's something that's been dialogue that we've gotten in testimony, we've gotten at multiple meetings. It's for the last number of years, that it's how they understand and can articulate and, and digest the material and then apply it, is what's important. And when you talk about college, college readiness, I think that that's where we get multiple presentations throughout the year on, on how the district is focused on that. So I have not seen, to date, anything of the sort. Is there any other testimony from the board? Cinda?
If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure. Sure.
I was wondering if it would be possible to put a survey out to students about the homework, about the homework protocol, because...
Not anymore. Unless, if it's a non-academic survey, we are not allowed to survey students the way we used to.
Well...
So if, I will say this, though, Chris.
Am I allowed to, though?
There are a couple of things, you know, and I know it's outside of this, but there's a couple of things we're always open to doing. I know that you have a student congress. I...
It's student council, student congress dissolved.
Okay. That's probably why my son hasn't gone. So, but student council, absolutely. I've come before student congress before, not your student council, but that's always something we'd be glad to do. And the school board members, we're always open to hearing what you have to say. We took testimony at meetings, we're always willing to do that. We're willing to take your emails. There's always an open dialogue, and, you know, if, if there is feedback that you want to share with the district, we're always open to hearing it from students, and I'd be glad, if you want to take, invite me to a meeting for student council, I'd be glad to participate.
Well, the reason I'm saying this is because a few of the kids I, who've talked to me, are not on student council, and I think they kind of have strong opinions, too. So I was kind of seeing if there's a way to get there, like, just a full school thing just to see what all the students think.
The state laws have made it very difficult for us to do that in the last year, unfortunately. That's something that we would have taken the opportunity to do in past years without hesitation, but unfortunately, regulations keep us from, from doing that effectively. So, but again, if there's, if we can brainstorm offline, there's a way that we can get those students a good conduit for feedback. We are always open to hearing from the front lines. It helps us a lot, so. So, Cinda, if you want to make...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that based on our discussion this evening and our findings, the school board has not violated New Hampshire Admin Rule Ed. 306.141, Parenes A, Close Parenes, Parenes 1, Close Parenes. In addition, the superintendent and assistant superintendent have complied with New Hampshire Admin Rule Ed. 302.02, Paren R, Close Paren, by implementing school board policy IKB through the homework protocol. And finally, that the board authorizes its chair with the assistance of legal counsel to draft a decision consistent with this motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
If we want to put the, the motion to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Rose isn't in her usual spot, she can't see our hands, so. So with that, the hearing is, yes?
You say I'm allowed to speak after you have a chance to speak.
We had closing arguments earlier, but if you wanted to speak, we will give you an opportunity.
What you said, I have the authority, I can speak after. I'm not a pro or a pro.
Thank you. May I ask that the board also vote on paragraph C, that a statement that includes the local school board has complied with the right-to-know laws? That's all.
That's not part of your complaint?
It's not part of your complaint. We took your complaint down to every paragraph. So if there's a further complaint, that was not...
It's not a complaint, it's a procedural thing, in that you have to follow the procedure. The procedure of the law says B, that I got a hearing, C, you make a statement that you follow the right-to-know, and D, you make the vote. You've done D, you've done B, you did not do C.
So I would say you need us to declare that we have followed right-to-know laws?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
That's all.
So...
That's, that's...
So I'd like to state that this board has followed right-to-know laws per RSAs, and we are, we are in compliance.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Thank you, and good night.